Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Cities, the Somersville City Council on this twenty-fifth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening and move right into tonight's agenda. The first item on that agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on October twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. We have a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Counsel, are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your pack? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Nobody signed up for public comment this evening, so we'll move right to the next agenda item. That's the first read of amendments to city ordinance articles. Five oh five point oh three, animal hospitals. Eleven oh five point oh three permits. Eleven eleven point oh three violations notice property owners should pay the cost of removal. Eleven twen- or thirteen twenty-nine point oh two zoning commission and five twenty-five point oh five tobacco usage restrictions. At this time, I'll turn it over to the city recorder who handles the planning and zoning, of which these are coming from. Planning and zoning as your recommendation, city council. Mr. Wendy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just echoing what he said, there's five ordinances here that we did as planning and zoning, made some corrections too. They were minor corrections, however, thought they were very good corrections, and I think that you'll agree as we go through them. I will spare you the reading of the complete ordinance in its entirety, and we'll just zone in on the area of change, which typically was one or two lines. So, I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. I'll just stay in the order that it's on the agenda. Five oh five point zero three, animal shelters. So, or animal hospitals. So, I, what I've given you is the pamphlet that you can follow along, and you can go to the five oh five point oh three animal hospitals, and I have, with the help of Amy, put it into the form that it, this will be the final form. This is not the old form. I do have my ordinance book, if anybody would like me to read anything that would be from the previous ordinance, but I will tell you what was changed. On five oh five point oh three, under animal hospitals, you will see under the subsection A, every veterinary surgeon within the limits of the city shall keep and maintain the premises housing as animal shelter clean, sanitary, and free from offensive owners of all times. That whole area was left alone. It's in subsection B where the change happened. Every veterinary surgeon or practitioner or any other person who visits, treats, or has knowledge of any animal having glanders, parasympathy, heartlandphobia, I'm sure I'm messing this up a little bit, rabies, tuberculosis, or any other like communicable dangerous disease shall within twenty-four hours thereafter notify the Somersville code official and the Nicholas County Health Department of such disease, and shall furnish the following information relating thereto. This before read that animal shelters, or animal hospitals, you were supposed to notify the health department instead of, well, they wanted you to notify the city health officer. It's who they wanted you to notify. And now, we are having you notify the Somersville code official and the Nicholas County Health Department. And I think what you're seeing is, back in the day, when some of these ordinances were written, they had some of these officials in place, and they were called different things. So, they obviously had a city health officer back then, which we do not have now. So, we felt that it was a good replacement to go into the Somersville code official and the Nicholas County Health Department.
So, what's the purpose of notifying Joey? What can Joey do about this situation?
Basically, he's just the code official of the city. It makes him aware of what's happening. He will probably in turn make a call to the health department or to the animal shelter itself. But it just gives our residents the opportunity to make, who should they notify? You know, it puts them in contact with the city officer, and if he can, then make sure that the others are aware of it. It lets the city aware that something is happening like that.
Okay. What about the county?
Yeah, they have the camp, the animal.
Yeah.
What do you call it? The ward, or the animal shelter?
No, the county, no, they've got a, they've got a.
Humane officer.
Yeah.
They have a what?
Humane officer.
Yeah, that takes care of animals.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that title is. I was unaware that that should be somebody that shouldn't be on there, that I would think. I haven't had that. I just need to find out what that exact title is. Do you know, Ray?
No.
No. See, I thought that was connected to the.
I mean, what I think we could do is pass this, you know, pass it tonight, but I think we should check that out, because they represent the county, the whole county, which includes the city. And then, I'm still struggling with Joey. Why tell Joey if there's, you know, what is Joey to do with health concerns when it doesn't fall under any code enforcement that he does? I mean, I don't know that it would be, not be a good thing to notify the city that we have this issue, but I'm just trying to find the relevance to go onto Joey, because he's a code official. There's, you know, what code does, you know, what code does this fall under that he would be enforcing, you know, his enforcement?
Well, the only code that it would fall under would be the ordinance that we passed it. It would be notifying of him, and he would make sure that the other entities are aware of the situation. Or, I mean, if you, if we wish not to include him, I still think that the city, it would be nice if the city was made aware. I don't think he's on here to make any decisions on the fact that, is that animal diseased or anything like that, because he wouldn't have that expertise. But it would be more as to allowing him as a code official or as an official of the city to be aware that there's an issue out there. But we could change that.
All right, no, that's okay.
Yeah. Because he will not be making, I guess, he will not be making any decisions. Like, he can't look at an animal and say that it's, I mean, that needs a professional. He can't look at that animal and see that it's diseased and has rabies or tuberculosis or anything like that.
This is just as a point of contact.
Yes, as a point of contact.
That's fine. I mean, I still struggle with it, because code enforcement of health, it doesn't do. And that's what this is. This is a health concern, a health issue. But I guess if Joey, if his job is to make sure the others have been notified, which this does not say, you know, it just says he is one of the people that has to be notified. But that's fine. At least the city's being notified, so. I mean, I mean, when you think about this being a health issue in the city, that doesn't fall under Joey's responsibility, I would almost think that if you're going to notify the city, it would be the office of the mayor. I mean, if there's a health issue that needs to be dealt with, that's not going to be Joey's deal to deal with, unless there's some other part of code enforcement that this falls under.
I don't believe there is. I mean, as I look at the current ordinance.
I mean, I just don't want to, I just don't want to put stuff on his plate that's irrelevant to his job.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, I can, I mean, we can leave it in there, but I'm just trying to find the relevance of Joey being notified that we have a health concern in the city.
Yeah. And I've, you know, I've been here for, what, more than four years now, and we have not had one yet.
Well, we don't know that we've had one. We just don't.
Yeah, true. We haven't been told. True.
Yeah. Five, the Somersville.
I would be okay if you would like that to be the office of the mayor.
Yeah, why don't you do that? I think if it's a health concern in the city, it shouldn't be the code official, because there's nothing for him to enforce. Let's change that to the office of the mayor.
Okay, we can do that. My concern was that the city notify.
Yeah, exactly. And I get that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the county is the animal control officer, human slash humane officer.
Yeah.
For the county.
The animal.
Animal control officer slash humane officer is what it says.
And it would be of the county?
Yeah, because even when we have issues with animals in the city, that's who we call. So, you're going to put that in there too?
I'm going to change the Nicholas County Health Department over to the animal control officer.
No, I would leave them in there too.
Would you?
Yeah.
I'll tell you the three.
Yeah.
I know, I'm, they work in.
Yeah, with health.
They stay in.
Your county. And the Nicholas County Animal Control Officer.
Officer.
So, that should be an officer.
So, we're going to notify three folks. We're going to, the office of the mayor, Somersville, city of Somersville, Nicholas County Health Department, and the animal control officer of the county. Should I say Nicholas County?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Good deal.
Okay. Would we like to, would we like to waive each one?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that. Somebody will put it in.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Gary? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
A second?
Second.
Got a second?
All right.
First and a second. Counsel, are there any questions?
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. That's the first read. What do we have to have two on these?
Yes, two. Yeah. I will put this in writing for you and bring it to the next meeting, so you guys can see the correct version. Eleven oh five point zero three. Okay. So, it's in regard to permits. It currently read that, under these permits, it was going and flowing through the city recorder, okay? And I know, shortly after I took office, I know Robert said there were some things that bothered him in there, and I'm sure this was one of them. I mean, I don't know how the city recorder would have the expertise to handle some of these permits, but in this eleven oh five point oh three, all factory housing, modular homes, manufactured homes, mobile homes, manufactured units, factory-built housing coming in the corporate limits of the city must first obtain a building permit from the Somersville code official before locating said units in the city corporate limits. Makes sense. He's got the expertise. He has the training that he should be making those decisions. And currently, to be quite honest with you, he is. I mean, he is going through there, but now, the way our old ordinance is read, he has to, he comes to me, and it's almost like I have to, you know, work hand in hand with him. But really, he should have, he has the expertise, he has the training, and he passed the proper state testing to show that. So, that's what we would like to make that change to.
Okay, so you're putting in a form of a motion?
Yes, I would entertain a motion to approve as that is written.
You have a first?
So moved.
Got a second?
Sir.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
Thank you. Eleven thirteen point zero three. When you skip over that, it's violations notice property owner to pay cost of removal before, the notice property owner to pay the cost of removal to say Somersville code official instead of the mayor. And I'm sure this may have been one of those things that the mayor saw. He's thinking, why should I be making a decision on this cost? So, Robert, I, Mayor, I'm happy to say I've got a new ordinance that will take you off of that responsibility, and it will read, in each case of violation of this article, the Somersville code official may upon giving not less than five days' notice to the owner, occupant, or person in charge of the premises involved cause such grass, weeds, and foreign growth to be cut and removed, and all expenses incurred by the city shall be chargeable to and paid for by the owner of such property. This is a big, because, I mean, this is used a lot during the summer, as I know Robert knows, and everybody here downtown knows. He has to enforce this quite often in the summer. So, I'm happy to say that will read code official and not the mayor. You are due. So, I would entertain.
You put in a form of a motion, second?
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
Thank you. Next is thirteen twenty-nine point zero two, zoning commission to say Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission instead of Zoning Commission or Somersville Planning Commission. Part of the reason on this, as you look through our ordinances, it's, the title of this organization or this committee or commission is basically all over the place in our, in our ordinances. So, we want to clear that up and make sure it's called what its actual entity is, so when people see it, it is what it is. We would like it to read, a municipal planning and zoning commission officially known as the Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission. Before, it was just called zoning commission or Somersville Planning Commission. So, we would like it to read Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission and stay consistent through the, through the ordinances.
Okay. You put in a first?
Put in a motion.
Got a motion first and a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Finally, the final one was, was a tough one. I thought it was going to take a lot of years off my life, but I figured out the best thing to do was just to follow the state on this. Tobacco usage restrictions, as we all know, have changed a lot over the last five or six years. A lot of our tobacco ordinance that we're currently using, I think the last change on that was two thousand and sixteen. Well, since two thousand and sixteen, there's been a lot of changes with vapes and things of this nature. I'm happy to say that the state is right on top of it. And what I'm asking is that, or I shouldn't say me, but the Planning and Zoning Commission is asking that we just take on the WV code sixteen dash nine A, which is the legislative findings and intent on the, on the tobacco usage. And I looked through it, and it's, it's very well done. And obviously, you know, they, they, they pay people to do this. I mean, they, they're doing the right things on this, and it's, it's very consistent through there. It hits on everything new. So, I would like to put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a first, second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Can you hear Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So, on the next meeting, Mayor, I'll come back to you with a second read.
Good deal.
And, there's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you to you and the commission for the work. Okay, counsel, the next thing on the agenda is approval to scrap the following three vehicles. And I can tell you, these vehicles have to be scrapped, because we pretty much stripped them to nothing. We cleared them out for some time using, using them for repair of other vehicles. So, we're going to scrap a two thousand and ten Ford F three fifty, scrap a two thousand Ford F two fifty, and a two thousand and eight Chevy Silverado. Entertaining a motion?
So moved.
So, a first and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. So, they will be taken off of the city's inventory once we have scrapped it. Okay, recorders report.
Let me know when we see.
No report. Okay, counsel, I passed you out a couple of pages here that I actually received from David Hess, the CEO of UHC. They've kind of changed the way they're managing hospitals now, and David is actually one of their regional CEOs now. He not only is the CEO of UHC, but he's also now over Somersville and Braxton. I had a meeting with David on November eighth. What promulgated the meeting was, we got a building permit here at City Hall for a half a million dollars on renovations at the hospital. And so, I immediately reached out to the hospital, let them know, I'd like an update on the funds that we allowed to stay with the WVU plant here in Somersville, meaning that we received three point three million dollars through the lease of the extended care beds when they were transferred to the nursing home at the time that was, oh geez. What was the name of the first nursing home? Yeah. Anyway, yeah. So, so the beds were leased on the same term from the city and the hospital to the new nursing home, and they're on the same lease term that the hospital is. And that started at a fifty-year lease, but of course, it's worked down so many years. So, when those beds were leased, there was actually an exchange of funds of three point three million dollars, at which I was totally transparent. At one point in time, I was thinking about pulling some of that money back to the city. And then, after thinking about the whole, the whole project and the hospital, if we were still in the hospital business, we would have taken those monies and put them back into the plan of the hospital, which it desirefully needs. So, I asked for an update. This is the update that I got. The whole idea was, is that the nursing home would be renovated once it, once the beds were, or the, the patients were, or the nursing home patients were actually moved to the new nursing home. So, they have started that, and here's a rundown of what David gave me on the expenditure of those funds to date. And then, more excitingly, you can see that they've spent to date nine hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars, and a lot of it is on Teradon site review, construction, asbestos testing, their engineer scratch, some architectural, construction and project manager, March Weston. Anyway, there's still two point three million dollars left. But more excitingly, if you look at the, the photo that he brought me, it tells you what's going on in the hospital. Exciting, really exciting. In the month of December, oncology will be up and live, will actually be giving people cancer treatments here in Somersville. So, this is his rendering. He came, he said this is the best he has right now. Of course, a lot of work's being done. You can see there's going to be a whole lot of changes, redesigned for patient waiting, a new stress lab, infusion. This over here is going to be the cancer center, the new cancer center. PTOT and speech is moving into a new area, cardiac rehab, all kinds of stuff taking place. They're going to get a new inpatient pharmacy expansion. Anyway, that's the rendering that he left me with to kind of say, these are the great things that are happening within the hospital, physical plant, and the services that WVU are providing our community. So, extremely excited. David is, is very aggressive and motivated to bring new services and expansions of healthcare here in our community. So, again, it just speaks resoundly over and over and over again, what a great deal we did partnering with WVU Medicine and that hospital. So, anyway, I wanted to share the update with you that he shared with me, and he has promised to keep us up to date as we truck along through these many expansions and changes in the hospital. Also, around the corner, because this total, this total, to get where they're going, if I understood him correctly, is about an eight million dollar project. And so, there might even be another capital campaign in the community to see if we can help offset these funds and what WVU wants to put in, and see if we can get some help from the community. So, keep your eyes and ears open. That's to come. Any questions about that, counsel?
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, the next thing I'd like to do is give you a real quick update of my visit to the Pentagon with the Assistant Secretary of the Army, Jamie Pecan. Had a fantastic meeting. Actually, I traveled, actually met with him in the afternoon of November fourteenth. I just wanted to real quick go over the things that we talked about. Of course, I highlighted, you know, first thing I did was thank, thank the Army Corps of Engineers, the Nashville District, who actually was charged with performing the study. Chris Stoltz and his team were the utmost professionals. I can't say enough about the experience that we have. Our team, our partners, which was NOAA, Ellis Power, and the city, through that whole process, they were the epitome of professionals, and it was just a great experience to deal with them. We asked questions along the way. They were quick to respond and keep us informed. And of course, at the end of the day, we accept their survey, and quite frankly, we believe their survey, or their study solidifies what we're asking to be done. But of course, they don't necessarily read it that way. So, we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for the study. We chose alternative two for the study. We, we chose out of the alternatives, that alternative for both cost reasons and time reasons, meaning that the other alternatives were much more costly, and also the time to, you know, you know, some of the studies that were in the alternatives would have taken years and years and years to perform. Unfortunately, after the release of the study, we're now being told that future studies are required. These includes the alternatives that weren't selected initially for that purpose, time and money. As a matter of fact, they've come back to us and to move forward on, to make, to make anything happen with what we have in the current study, that by the way, is this big, they're seeking another nine hundred and fifty to one point three million dollars to move forward, which is absolutely not possible, because the dynamics of our partnership changes in two thousand and thirty-one. There's no way our partners would ride that ride with us, because in two thousand and thirty-one, they're basically completely out of the picture, Ellis Power, their contract expired. So, anyway, the data studied, they studied thirty-four years of data, and we asked them during the study why they weren't looking at all of the data that was available, which was a hundred and two years. It could actually go back to nineteen oh nine. And of course, they, the unused data would have revealed that the maximum downstream flow on record is a hundred and three, three sixty-eight CFSs, which was the flood in two thousand and sixteen. So, in all their modeling, they could use a real example, and that was the flood of two thousand and sixteen. What we're asking them to do is real simple. We're asking them that they, they release when they're above the summer winter pool, or the winter pool level and summer pool level, they release at ten thousand CFSs. We're asking them to lower that down to four thousand CFS when they get to fifteen. And really, all we're asking for now is a allowable opportunity to produce power when they get to sixteen twenty. So, we're focusing on sixteen twenty down to the fifteen seventy-five. We're asking them to release at four thousand CFSs instead of ten thousand CFSs, which is going to take an additional, about an additional eight point five days to do so. Incidentally, if they would, their modeling showed, they moved the storm that happened in the summer, which has been the biggest storm that, that's on record back to any data that can be looked at back to nineteen oh nine. And we still would have been, if that storm would have come in winter, we're asking for that variance. Even with the variance, we still would be thirty-nine feet below the spillway. So, we're asking for a change in winter pool to generate more clean green energy. So, anyway, we went through all the details with them. We actually used, in the slide presentation, I actually used their slides, their data out of. We'll also give them an override. We think the override fails safe feature of this whole ask is, you're still in control. So, unfortunately, sometimes we don't feel that the water control manual allows for the technology that they have today on storm projections and predictions. It's, you know, in some cases, I think it's antiquated, but, you know, if you think you've got another storm coming back to back, then you don't last to stay at sixteen twenty. You drop it down to the fifteen seventy-five. But even if that storm would have come, and we would have been at the sixteen twenty, that still would have been thirty-nine feet below the spillway. We showed, we explained to them that the additional annual generation is twenty-three thousand megawatt hours. Additional renewable energy generation of twelve point four percent over baseline. We really hammered the national green energy environment. We really hammered the national green energy environment, um, all of those issues. Um, uh, increased revenue to all existing hydro beneficiaries, uh, the federal government, FERC, state and local governments, increased green energy footprint by providing carbon-free renewable energy to twenty-three hundred homes annually. If they would allow us to use that water, our projections are, we could, we could create good clean green energy to twenty-three hundred more homes annually. This is the one that I really hammered in on at the end, and additional generation of twenty-three thousand megawatt hours reduces the carbon dioxide footprint by a hundred and seventeen million pounds. That's huge. So at the end of the day, I said, Mr. Secretary, how can we partner with you to make this happen? He was very receptive, it was a, it was really, uh, um, you know, I come out of there feeling really good, the team was feeling really good. You know, the only thing that's, um, that's, that's unfortunate is, um, the folks we met with are leaving their job on January twentieth. And so, um, hopefully, um, you know, I got to tell you that there are some folks that don't change. Mark Kramer, who we've worked with, who's been our, um, go-to with the secretary's office, has just been a gentleman and a scholar. And so my hope is, is that we made a big enough impact for our ask for the study that's already on the table, that's already been paid for, um, that they'll be able to give us some variance or some consideration to generate energy on water we're just wasting. And if, it just, you know, to me, and, you know, you, you know, I took it a couple steps farther than we're in this presentation, and I told him it really aggravates me that on the last day of March, we'll be burning water. To stop April first, because that's the date in the book, we start filling to summer pool April first, you go down there, if we're above fifteen seventy-five on the last day of March, they're burning that water at ten thousand C F Ss, to then stop the very next day and put us completely out of commission to fill the summer pool. Just doesn't make sense. Just, you know, some of that stuff just, you know, doesn't make sense. But anyway, um, it's been a, it's, it's been an incredible journey with the Army Corps of Engineers. I just hope that we can get something out of. I will tell you that Chris Stoltz and his group came in well under budget, we sent them six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and they're returning four hundred and one thousand. So, yeah, so they.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it is, it is. So, um, once we receive that money, we'll be, we'll be dispersing, um, half of it was paid by Ellis Power, they'll get their half back, and then the other half was fifty-nine forty-nine, or fifty-one forty-nine, the city had fifty-one percent of the other half, and, and NOAA Corp had forty-nine. So, um, we're, we're looking at, from the study, we'll put right out a hundred thousand dollars back in our coffers. Okay, so anyway, it was a great meeting. Uh, Mr. Pinkham said that, uh, you know, he would definitely give us a follow-up, or give me a follow-up, and so I haven't heard anything to date, but, um, I just hope that I hear something before he leaves office and I start her saying something. Mayor, we're going to see what we can do, or mayor, thank you, but no thank you, the study is the study, so we'll see what happens. Uh, want to remind everybody about the Christmas parade on December sixth at six P M downtown Summersville, Santa Claus comes to town. Um, everybody and anybody that wants to get in that parade is welcome to do so. And then also, council, I want to remind you, I, uh, hope that you will please join me in honoring, uh, our city employees at the annual's, uh, Christmas breakfast, which is December fifth at seven thirty A M. And then, uh, with that said, I would just like to say that, um, there are so many things I'm thankful for, and at the top of that list is wishing all of you, you council and the citizens of this great city, a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday filled with family, friends, and happiness. May your blessings be multiplied. This Thanksgiving, I wish all of you a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Council reports? Okay. Um, no executive session is needed, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay. Got a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.